Okay, so let's begin the meeting. I'd like to call to order the August 11th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, City School District. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
United States of America, together, public, with its students, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Kelly.
Mr. Caslaya.
Delayed.
Present, I'm here.
Oh, sorry. Hi, James.
Can't see everyone. Ms. Flynn?
Here.
I can see you. Ms. Stadler?
Delayed.
Your saying?
I'm here on the phone, 2466. I'm having a problem getting online. They're asking me for a password.
It's at the bottom of the info, Anthony. 965-239.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
And Mr. White? I see you listed.
He's here.
I see you on the screen. This better bid?
Here.
I see this here.
Sheer. Thank you. We're going to go straight into open to the public, but if I do, I would like to have a motion to waive policy 2350 and 1230.
I'm moved.
You have a second?
Second.
I don't know. Is that Kristen? Any comments or questions? The first policy is the order of our meeting, just for everyone to understand. The second policy is to waive our public comment policy, which normally is a four-minute limit. So I would ask people that do want to make public comments to please adhere to that, but we haven't yet adjusted it for this Zoom meeting. So please be respectful of that. Any other comments or questions? Kelly, do you see that floor is here?
Okay, yes.
Home neighbor?
Hi.
Opposed? The passes 80. Okay. If there's anyone who has public comments that they would like to make, I would ask you to maybe put your name in the chat so I can call on you. If possible, if you're on a phone and it's hard for you to speak up. Public comment. Okay, so none. I'm going to move on to the workshop with Matt.
Hey, we are just going to give an update on reopening planning tonight. And so if we can get those slides. You can just go to the next one. All right. So the goal tonight is just to kind of, you know, give an update on where things are and some of the things we are working on right now and try to lay out a little bit of some of our next steps. Like I said, back on July 31st, that we did, you know, submit a plan on that date, but we, there are many details that we're working on adding and strengthening and evolving parts of the plan. So indeed, it was submitted to both the Department of Health and the State Education Department. We were on the list with, I guess, 107 other districts that said we did complete the plan. And it appears that, I can't speak for all 107 districts, but I think most of them neglected to click on the attestation link that said that we read the guidelines. I think that was one of the primary reasons that we posted the plan to the public on that day and we submitted it to both departments on that day. So it's sort of an odd way to communicate with 1/7 of the districts in New York that they forgot to do that. But I guess it's water under the bridge now, and I have spoken with both the Governor's Office and the Department of Health at the New York level, and our plan is in and they're looking at it and everything is fine for the timeline. And we continue to work on it daily. We have meetings, either small group, large group, community, large staff meetings, small staff meetings, et cetera. So when we make an official change to the plan, we will notify everyone about that addition that we're putting in there or a change. Next slide. All right. So Governor Cuomo announced on Friday, August 7th, really no surprise that he is allowing districts to reopen. And I say no surprise because of the COVID-19 transmission rates are some of the lowest in the country here in New York. And with the levels that he laid out quite a while ago, you know, 5% is sort of the monitor things and 9% is a school closure, at least at the state level, 9% transmission rates that us hovering around 1% for quite some time means that he's given the green light to reopen or for schools to make decisions, all 700 of his districts to make decisions. So he wants us to communicate by the end of this week, a little bit more specifically, or at least make it easier to find on the website, information about how we're going to do contact tracing, or how at least we're going to work with the Department of Health, information about how we'll utilize testing if needed. And then again, working with the Department of Health to be more specific about remote learning and kind of, he's making some communication requirements. I'd like to give ourselves a little bit of a pat on the back because I think we were ahead of that curve and we've been doing internal, either small group or town hall meetings with our employees. We've been doing, you know, we did four community Zooms before even July 31st, and we have plans to do many more, so that's not an issue with us. It appears that he made that recommendation because it seems some districts have not really been doing a lot of communicating around their planning. So but we have some work to do on these, and so we're going to talk about each one, some a little bit longer than others. Next slide, please. All right. Before we get to that, and this is, I'm not asking for any board approval, and what I sent you has, as a draft, has a couple of issues. So before we share the draft public, we need to, you know, make sure the calendar is correct. But we want to make a couple of changes. Our original calendar had September 3rd and 4th as professional learning days. We'd like to take the two that are during the school year and move them up to the beginning of the year. And I would add whatever we're doing, you know, if everything changes in the next three or four weeks and suddenly there's like outbreaks of COVID-19 and for whatever reason we're all remote, I would still want this. So we would like to front load professional learning days and have four days with our staff before we start working with our students. And so that's one of the changes. So I'm just sort of sharing this on a conceptual level with the board and the community. We really like, and we've been talking about this as an administrative team, to use September 10th and 11th to do orientation days for really all levels. And so that's pre K through 12. So we're kind of picturing different things at different levels. For new students at the middle school and high school, we'd really like them in to get tours of the building. Of course, we'd have to really schedule this so we don't have, you know, huge, large numbers of students in the building at any time. At the elementary level, the elementary principals, obviously, this is slightly weather dependent, but they love to do some outside socially distanced meet and greets with both parents and students, where parents, if their children would be in person, can drop off supplies, where people can pick up Chromebooks, and where people can meet the teachers that they're going to be working with. So we think right now that we can accomplish that on September 10th and 11th. And then on September 14th, we would begin both hybrid and remote learning. And this is something that we're still working on, working on this both with administrators and teachers. We're looking at some possible modifications to the day. And so that would be start times and possibly end times of the day. And that would be to provide our teachers extra time to work with students remotely. So, or to have more flexibility within the school day. And so, so anyway, we're still kind of playing around with that and working with our teacher groups on that. But we think that's a possibility to kind of pull off what we're working on here, that we're going to need to make some modifications. So our next board meeting is August 24th. I haven't spoken about this with the whole board or board officers. I mean, if, you know, if there's a need to have another meeting between then and the 24th, we're happy to do that. But we would for sure be talking about these changes to what the school day times would be by probably mid next week sometime, if not earlier, and then start working with the board about adopting those changes. Next slide. Communication is one of the big things Governor Cuomo spoke about. And again, I guess, I don't know if valid, validation is the word, but I feel like we've been trying to take some proactive steps here, but I also just want to be clear, we feel like we have a long way to go with trying to answer questions that people have. Every time we do one of these, more questions pop up. And so we're working really hard to try and answer them. For instance, today, elementary principals got together and did an elementary Zoom. And right after, we tried to kind of go through some of the chat questions. I tried to help out. I'm not sure I did a good job or not, but I tried to both chat answers to questions, but also help out the principals with the answering. But we immediately met right after the Zoom ended to go through some of the questions that people had and developed plans on answering them. Beacon High School administration is going to do a Zoom on Thursday at 3:00. By the way, the elementary one was recorded today, so we'll post that on our reopening website. We're going to record all of these. Beacon High School is doing one Thursday at 3:00. We're still talking about what the schedule will look like, what the initial plans for remote learning will look like, just sort of day to day, how is it going to look and feel at the high school. Our PPS department is going to be focusing on students with disabilities and their tentative time is Tuesday, August 18th, a week from today at 7:00. Well, they'll do the Zoom. Ron Bout is working on the time. As soon as we get that, we'll share that out, but that will be in the next few days. And then also just continue doing a weekly Zoom. So my, I'm tentatively planning one for Thursday at 11:00. I might need to shift that based on something that's come up on my calendar, so I didn't have a chance to change the slide, but I'm thinking of trying to do one Thursday. Or if I am to be in town on Friday, there's a chance I might be out of town, that I might do it on Friday, too. So I will confirm that by tomorrow, when I'll be doing those. And I'll also just be trying to answer questions. We have an FAQ that we're kind of at least putting some final thoughts on, at least version one of the FAQ, and we're aiming to put that up on our website, hopefully tomorrow. We're having weekly meetings with our, also our employee groups in a number of different ways. We're having in-person meetings. We're having town hall Zoom meetings. And we're working closely with all of our different bargaining units on both safety and with our teachers and TAs on the instructional side of things as well. And the instructional part, you know, is something that is very complex and is taking some time. We're trying to do it well. And so anyway, we've had a lot of good meetings, and I just want to personally thank all of our union leadership in Beacon because they've been really proactive with us and helping us set these meetings up, helping get questions to us. And, and, you know, working with us and trying to get answers to things. Just the last message, and I will put this, I'll put this in a, I'm going to do a robocall tomorrow. We're going to remind folks, and I'll remind folks that the email that we sent out about making a decision about hybrid or remote, I think based on just the Zoom today, we're going to give a couple extra days for people to think about it. And I also, if people really feel like they need more time, like we're going to allow that. I'm not trying to pressure people or just absolutely ruin things for them right now if they need a little bit more time. So I'm going to remind people about, either they can send the letter back to us, or they can do the link, and we'll include the link in the email. We'll text people, we'll leave a message. But I'm also going to ask folks if they have questions for them to reach out to me, and I'll make sure I have my email address on there because I have tried, whenever I have a question from a parent or staff member, that I try my best to either answer it or put it on our list of things that we need to work on. So please reach out to me if you have questions. We will work on getting answers to you as soon as we can.
Matt?
Yeah, sorry.
Someone asked me if the commitment that they moved to either hybrid or remote learning, is that for one semester or for the entire?
It is for one semester. They can switch in January. However, I think this only makes sense if someone is doing the hybrid in-person model and either a health issue develops, or they just don't feel like it, if they feel uncomfortable with it or whatever, we will switch them over to remote whenever they ask for that. Switching from remote to in-person, though, we would ask to do, to wait to do that in January, just so we can manage the class size aspect. And we also don't want to just sort of be moving people back and forth all the time, but I really, and I'll make this clear to folks, I tried to make it clear on the elementary Zoom today, that if people, if people at any point, if they're doing the hybrid in-person thing, if they, again, have the health issue that comes up, or just some reason that they feel like they need to switch to remote, we are not going to make them wait till January. That does not make sense. We just don't want to be moving people back and forth all semester, which I think most people would agree makes sense. But yeah, if that helps. And maybe that might help people make their decisions as well. And, you know, just on a personal side of things, I'm a dad, too, and, you know, it's a lot to think about. And we tried to take a little bit of a vacation last week, and of course, the communication came out when we were attempting to have a vacation. And so, you know, we started all the family discussions, which I know many of you are having about it. So, you know, we're going through the same stuff, and I understand that it's hard. I will say this, some of the details, we're working on the instructional side. I think we'll have some hammered out in the next few days, but some are going to evolve over time because we need more time to work with our teachers, and that takes time. And so I am asking folks if they can make a decision to make it based on health or comfortability reasons right now, because if, the more kids we know about by the deadline, the more it helps this plan. So next slide. So anyway, the next slide was just going to be a very brief statement about contact tracing and testing. So Governor Cuomo asked for a couple of things. He asked for that information to be more readily accessible by us on our website, so we'll make that more readily accessible. And he also asked for us to kind of add more detail to that as well. So we're going to work on that. So we think it's best in Dutchess County to try to address these things as a county. So we have a meeting tomorrow as a superintendent group, and we have a meeting with the Department of Health this week as well in Dutchess County to work on that to, you know, to get a better, not a better plan, but to have a more like informative plan and easier for people to reach. I will just say this, I find, I don't want this to sound like a political statement, but I think it's interesting that, that the governor's asking for each district to come up with a testing plan, when I've always felt the mantra of this entire experience has been that plans, that we shouldn't have every district sort of out there trying to figure things out, or every locality, or even every state. So it's curious to me why it came out that way, but we will do it, we're asked, and we in Dutchess County will try to do it as a county, both with the Department of Health and the other districts, because we want to be on the same page as a group. All right. So, all right, I am just going to go, we're having a little problem with the slides, but I'm just going to go over just some other questions that are coming up. I know there's many more, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I want to talk about remote learning. Sorry, I got a little, little mess up in my head with where we are. So remote learning, that's probably where we're getting the most questions right now, deservedly so. The governor's asked us to be a little bit clearer. We are trying to work closely with the teachers and how this looks. And, you know, I said it on the elementary Zoom today, this is, it's a challenge. It's not a, it's not a bad challenge, but it is a challenge because essentially, we're trying to pull off two things at once. We're trying to pull off a remote learning experience for students and a hybrid experience, which has in-person and remote as well. So it's complicated, and I don't mean that in a way that makes it impossible, but we, one of our first tasks was at each school, at each level, that we asked our administrators to develop hybrid schedules that would easily convert into remote schedules for all students at a moment's notice. We're going to, I'm going to dig a little bit deeper into that, and we're looking at ways to have a remote experience be something that is connected to our classrooms here in person, where those students are getting regular and scheduled interaction and teaching from teachers, the remote students, whether they're on the hybrid remote or full remote, they're getting interaction with their peers, and they feel like they're part of a community. So that, that takes a little bit of thinking outside the box, to use that cliche. It takes some work with teachers across all of our buildings, and it takes a lot of planning. So we're trying to get the structure and that just sort of the sense of what it's going to look like done in the next few days, and then really work on the like instructional sort of training for it in the weeks leading up to the school year. The remote Wednesday, you know, part of that day is going to be professional development for teachers and extra planning time for teachers, along with working with all of our students remotely. So we're going to have time every week to refine and work on making this multifaceted plan work. But it's complicated. One of the complications is, we're sort of in this catch 22 with the community, which we will, we will work through, but it's hard for us to plan exactly what it's going to look like when we don't have the number of students who are opting for remote. And I totally get on the parent's side that they want a little bit more information before they commit to it. So we're going to work on the assumption right now, it looks like it's sort of splitting 70% of families are requesting the hybrid model and 30% are requesting the full remote. So we're going to kind of move forward with those numbers, just as, just as a planning tool for us, and work on what this going to, what it's going to look like. One of the things that we're thinking about for remote is, we'd like to have a model also that deals with students, who we may have students that need to quarantine for family reasons, or students who just get sick. And so obviously, there's going to be other illnesses besides COVID-19. And so we also think it'd be great to have a model that those students who may be choosing to do the hybrid model can just sort of slide into a remote model at any time, and they stay, you know, in a learning community where they're with their peers and their teacher. The same could be said for an entire learning community that they may need to, you know, quarantine at any moment. And so we would want that learning community to remain whole. So, so we got great feedback at the elementary Zoom today that we need to get much more specific with this. We are working very hard on trying to get more specific. At the middle and high school, we're working on having our remote, our full remote students follow some sort of schedule, either where they're checking in with teachers or getting either streamed lessons or lessons that are videotaped that they can view at a different time. Not every class will have a streamed or videotaped thing every single time because it just wouldn't make sense. But we are going to greatly increase the number of sort of direct teaching experiences students have and the level of interaction that they have with their peers and their teachers. So our administrators are working hard on this. We're working with our teachers on this. There's a lot of questions we need to answer. I totally get the frustration that people have. We are working through it, and it's complex. But I feel like we're getting a pretty good handle on it, and I think we're going to come up with a model that, that keeps our community whole, that tries to meet the needs of all of our students, but, but also probably doesn't make everybody completely happy, which I shared, I think, at the very beginning of this, like six weeks ago, that, you know, the consultant that I worked with, or I attended a Zoom thing way back in June, talked about this is the year where kind of no one is happy. So that's going to be a part of this as well. The one thing about the remote learning part that I do want to be clear about is, we only have so many staff members. And I think, you know, I feel like I've tried to read everything, I'm not really on the Beacon Facebook world, but I've tried to read every sort of thought piece, essay, what have you, about how people think in-person school can happen. And one of the things I think that said a lot is, well, you just split your teachers, and you have like this group of teachers teach the remote kids, and you have this group of teachers teach the in-person kids, and it works out perfectly. I would sort of think that a lot of those people who write those maybe either aren't in my seat, or they're in a different district, because we've looked at that very closely. For us to pull a large number of teachers out to just teach remotely would, would make some of our in-person education almost kind of impossible to do. Our elementary schools are all on the small side, and pulling, you know, numbers of teachers out of each of those buildings would make kind of everything we do almost impossible. So that being said, we are working on a model that teachers are going to be working with both groups. They have time to do it. They feel like they're supported, and that all kids feel like they have a good level of interaction, of direct teaching, of support, et cetera, and that they also feel like they're part of a community. So it's complicated. We're working on it. We're going to be trying to communicate some clarity with this by Friday, and then next week, schedule some more information sessions where we can dig into it more. And I am okay, and I'll say this in my robo-communication tomorrow, if people need an extra few days to decide what they want to do for next year, that's fine, too. Next slide. I'm sorry, I kind of messed up in my head. So I spoke about this. We're working as a county to further develop what we're doing in this model. And I think doing this, not trying to do this just independently as a district, but as a group, makes sense, since that's what we're trying to do in Dutchess County. I think a lot of counties are trying to do it that way, too. Next slide. So just other questions that have popped up, and this is not an exhaustive list. So one of the big questions we've gotten is, what, just what is the class size in the hybrid model going to be? And so my best estimate right now is it's class size, and this is pre K all the way through 12th grade. A class size in the hybrid model would be probably anywhere from six to 12 kids. I think most of those hybrid classes are going to be under 10. So that's great. And I, we want to start really broadcasting that one out a lot more, that with those small numbers, we can do a lot more social distancing and, and really, you know, work with students in that in-person model and also incorporate students working remotely as well. But the class sizes in the hybrid model will be very small. Where are we with the outdoor spaces? We have ordered the tents, and we have, will have multiple tents at all of our buildings. The state has required that anything, any structure that either we're, you know, is being built or rented or used, has to go through the state approval process. They are trying to expedite it. So we are working with state officials, our architects, fire code, all of that kind of stuff. So of course, it's a little bit more complicated than, you know, than some of the outdoor work that we've done. Things like outdoor gardens and whatnot don't have to go through that sort of approval process, but any sort of structure, at least my understanding is, it has to go through this state approval process. So we are working on that right now, but things have been ordered. We're going to have it ready based on state approval for the start of the year. I do always say this every time I talk about outdoor learning spaces, it is not the solution, but it is a really great option. And so we are, we're going to work with staffs to make use of that option as best as we can. We get asked about masks a lot. I have a teacher in TA Town Hall tomorrow. We get asked about masks a lot. I have a teacher in TA town hall tomorrow, which will talk about masks. A lot more as well. Masks will be required of everyone. But I also want to make it clear mask breaks are also required. And we are going to work as professionals at each level to develop mask break guidelines and parameters. So what that means is we're going to give direction to students about when the mask breaks are. And when they can do it. We don't want to leave that up to, you know, all of individual students to just sort of decide when the mask comes off. We want our staff to feel safe. Working with the students in person. We want our community to feel safe sending their children, and so that's going to be something that we're going to work. In a compassionate way, in a supportive way. But also a clear way. And the reason I say professionals at each level are going to work on mask break guidelines. I think mask breaks at the kindergarten level are going to look different than mask breaks. At the junior and high school level. It's just, it just kind of makes sense. And so, so we're working on that, but masks are required, mask breaks are required. We will develop. Kind of a process. It's spelled out in the state guidelines. We just need to make it set for beacon if people have. A medical issue around masks, a process for people to to make that known to us. So we can make accommodations for folks. We've purchased large quantities of disposable masks up to 25,000, and we also are purchasing reusable cloth masks for students. It seems like I have not had a chance. I've had a very busy day. Or I feel like I've been on a different zoom pretty much all day. But I've just been seeing some studies, a study came out today. About masks and which ones are more effective than others, so I need to take a look at that. But we will make sure that we, whatever we're requiring of our students and staff meet the Department of Health guidelines, for sure. Next slide. I already kind of talked about this. If you need more time to make a decision, I'll talk about that on my robo call tomorrow. It'd be great to know by Friday, if you can make the decision for health reasons by Friday, that helps us plan. But we will give some additional time next week for people to do that. And if they need to talk to us further, we will talk to you further. What if I want to switch to remote if hybrid in-person is not working for a family or an individual student? We will accommodate that. I spoke about this one too. If you want to switch to in-person hybrid from remote, we ask that that change happens in January, so we can control for class sizes. This was a huge question today on our elementary zoom. Can changes be made with the group? A family's child is in. So you, we can make those requests. I asked if those requests be made to individual building principals, but we can't guarantee. That we can grant all those. I know some people are trying to form. Alliances, or maybe that makes it sound like a reality. Show too much. They're trying to form pods, I guess is the word. And and you know, we will try to work with folks, but we absolutely cannot guarantee that every request is granted. Because we have to pay attention to the class sizes too. So, uh, next slide. All right. So what's next? We, we're going to be doing, I'll be doing some weekly zooms. I forgot to mention, and I sent an email out to the community about this today. That I'm also doing a zoom tomorrow night at seven with the Highland Current, Highlands Current. And so I sent that zoom information with them, so. Perhaps people are getting tired of seeing me on Zoom, so I won't be offended if you do not log on to that. But they will be taking questions from, I understand, from people viewing, and I will try to answer all. Questions that come my way. It will be moderated. So it won't be me attempting to follow what's happening in chat. I'll be doing some weekly updates and town halls with both staff and community. More robust and detailed FAQ will be coming out in the next. Day or two, and we're really going to be working on trying to clarify questions people have, especially about what the instructional side looks like. So that takes a lot of work with teachers and administrators. And honestly, for the first few weeks of our planning process, we were spending a lot more time on the. Health and safety part, and we're still spending time on that with our teachers and our administrators, but we're also spending a lot of time on the instructional part. So that should be becoming clear in the next few days and weeks. So we're just going to keep going back and forth between planning, communication, and we'll be doing that all throughout the summer. Whatever is left of it, it will be a challenging and amazing year. I am most assured of that, and just want to open it up for questions for folks.
I have a couple of questions in regards to the in-person for the hybrid piece. Can you description as to what that school day for the in-person children will look like for the elementary, then the middle school, and then high school? Like, are the kids going to be staying in the same classroom all day? And elective teachers pushing in, or are they going to go to a different classroom for elective? How is lunch going to be disseminated and all that stuff?
Yep. At the elementary level. Kids will be staying in the same space for almost the entire day. So at the elementary level, it's the most easy way for us to pod. Kids, and so that's what we'll be doing. So most of our specialist classes will be traveling to the classroom. Those teachers are preparing for that. We do, we're working on trying to have PE outside, you know, to make use of the, of the outside and. And so we, there will be some travel and lunch will be held in the classrooms. We'll be working on planning for students with allergies to make sure that the classroom is a safe space. For those students, and so we talked about that today at the elementary level for them to have plans. For what those classes will do instead of eating in the classroom. So the elementary kids will be in a very tight pod. And really won't be traveling except really for PE. And some individual students will travel to meet with their like OTPT, you know, social workers, that kind of stuff. At the secondary level, kids will be switching classes. That we, we really looked at for a long time at that. I know in some districts, they were able to pod. Like some districts were able to pod their sixth graders. Some were able to pod a little bit beyond that. Some were kind of in the same boat as us. But kids will be switching classes. At the middle school level, kids will be switching classes on a staggered level. So. You know, at roundabout, just with the number of kids who are choosing remote and the number of kids for hybrid. My estimate is we'll probably have around 200 kids in the building at any one time. And whenever we do a class change, it'll be staggered. So probably. I want to say 50 or 60 or 70 kids will be in the hallways at any one time because they're going to stagger the class change by grade. You know. All of our surfaces are sort of veering into the, you know, like the cleaning part of it. All of our, all of our surfaces in our classrooms, that includes desks. Tops will be treated with this bioshield. Material or cleaning product. That's a EPA approved product and also works against COVID-19. That that allows for for the desk to be virus free. Once it's applied correctly and it lasts on there. For a pretty lengthy amount of time. And Marie, I cannot remember the amount of time. That bioshe works for. So kids will be changing classes at the secondary level, at the high school level. So, sorry, at the. At the middle school level, they're working on a schedule where they are trying to kind of compress their schedules. So teachers will have like an extra, not an extra teaching period. That they're compressing their in-person teaching, at least they're working on this before. For teaching periods. So then the teacher will have a remote teaching period for either kids who are home on hybrid or kids who are home and all remote. And so, so they're working on a schedule that kind of meets the needs of all the kids, whether they're hybrid, hybrid remote, or all remote. High school kids will be changing classes. It's a little bit harder for them to stagger because kids go in many more different directions at the high school. They're working on protocols for the class. For the hallway changes, both with markings in the hallway and really monitoring. Students and giving students a little bit of extra time. So they're not all sort of ever come together. I think everyone was kind of collectively freaked out last week by the pictures. I hate to pick on schools. By the pictures coming out of Georgia, the Georgia high school where kids were like crammed in the hallway at class change. That will not be the case for us by any stretch. So we'll do whatever possible to make sure our, well, A, the kids will have masks on. In a situation, in a situation like that, but also that they're not all jammed into a hallway. I think with the number of students in our buildings for the hybrid model, that will never happen anyway. But anyway. So, so roundabout schedule. Roundabout schedule will be, so let's say the kids are hybrid for the first two days. I'm sorry, they're in person for the first two days, and then Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they'll be switching over to remote. They'll still be having classes with, with some of their teachers, especially their core teachers on a schedule. On those remote days, the all remote kids will also be having. Classes on a schedule for roundabout, and so our, our hope is that we can figure out a way to advance instruction. Every single day. That's what we're trying to work on. You know, we need more teacher input and teacher help with trying to pull this off, but that's the initial plan. High school, it's a little bit more of a challenge. Because we have so many singleton classes, advanced classes, et cetera. So high school's still kind of working on what their plan is going to look like, but it will be an eight-period day for high school. And the kids who are in person will go to their classes on Monday and on Tuesday. And then they will be either getting independent work to do from their teachers and or also have like check-ins with classes. Live streaming with some of their classes or video lessons with some of their classes for the remote days. The remote students will also have kind of a five-day version of that at the high school. So high school, we're still working on roundabout. We're still working on some of the details. Some of these will evolve really in the next few days. And I know Lisa at her zoom on Thursday will get more into detail about what the high school's schedule looks like. Brian and his team, they're aiming to do their zoom, I think on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And they'll be doing the same, like getting more into detail. We're trying to create something, and I, I'm probably not doing this justice, but we're. We're trying to do something where kids, whether they're all remote, whether they're hybrid, like they are advancing their learning. Every single day. They are having interactions with teachers and peers every single day. They are engaging every single day and teachers are, we're bait, you know, we're building time into the day that teachers have the time. And the support to pull this off. I think the teachers from the teacher's side. What we're hearing from them is they, they're, they're kind of game to do what's needed for the kids, but they don't want to be creating. Multiple different lessons. For different groups of kids. So they're going to be trying to create lessons that can both sort of work in person, but also translate. To Google Classroom or possibly being filmed. Again, some of the high school and secondary classes don't film easily. So I don't want to just say that every secondary class is going to be filmed because it's not that simple. But we're trying to create a model that just every day the learning gets advanced, whether a student is in person. Whether they're hybrid, remote, or whether they're all remote. And I know. Some of this stuff feels a little jumbled with folks, and I get it. And I think trying to do both these things is the right thing to do, but it adds a level of complexity that's tricky.
So just to follow up to that, Matt, so basically, when there is a, when someone confirms that they were around. When that tested positive for COVID or has COVID. Basically, the isolations for the middle school and the high school would be because the kids are. Switching classes and stuff, the school would probably have to shut down, but at the elementary level, maybe it would be just that class.
At the elementary level, I think it would just be that class. At the secondary level, you probably would be looking at. I mean, you know, if we're just looking at students, obviously, but teachers are in the mix. So if it would just be students, it would just be the students in that blue or gold group. But the teachers would be involved in that. So. This has been a struggle. I mean, I've tried to be sort of open and transparent every single time I'm on one of these zooms and. And, you know, every district is kind of doing this uniquely. I think some of the smaller districts were able to pod the secondary level a little bit more. It was just. Kind of beyond our scope to be able to do that. So to quickly answer your question, yes, if there is a positive case. We would most likely having to be quarantined a pretty large number of secondary students. Now, in working with the Department of Health, they would talk to us about contact tracing. And they would talk about, let's say it's a sixth grader. And there's like a staggered class change. It might be that that sixth grader really only connected with other sixth graders. So hypothetically, it could be just that we're asking sixth graders to quarantine. Or the ones that, you know, were with that student. But there's the reality side of all of this where, you know. People will have concerns. People will maybe not want to send their students. People are going to want to feel safe. Staff is going to feel the same way. So there's kind of like the logical. I don't want to say logical, but I think you know what I mean, like the, you know, on paper version of this, but also like the community reaction. To a positive case. And, and so that's something that we're going to be working through. I mean, the one thing that. I've tried to be very clear on, if we have a positive case of a student. Or a staff member that will be communicated, I think, I know it'll be communicated as soon as we know about it. I think where I've seen other states or districts have issues is when they don't communicate it right away and it. Kind of spirals a little bit. But this is a complex thing, but yes. Anthony, I'm giving you long answers to, to direct questions. But yeah, at the secondary level, there's going to be more opportunity for quarantining, for sure. And at the elementary level. Because of the pretty strict potting, I think we're going to be able to isolate things a lot better.
So the asking part that goes with that piece is earlier you said for the hybrid that the. And end times might be a little bit different to accommodate for the remote. And I look at remote learning. There be then the online learning, like, so if we were a district that was fully online, I think that would look differently than if it was remote because. There would be two populations in person as well as the remote that you're dealing with, where if it's a fully online program. It might look a little bit differently. Am I reading that correctly or understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I. We, yeah, we are not able to create like the beacon virtual school, like we just don't have the staff to do it. I'm not really aware of other districts even attempting to do that. So yeah, the remote learning at the start of the year, like if we go all remote, it will look a little bit different for sure, or a lot different in some cases. Because teachers would be completely switching their classes over to Google. To Google Meet or video conferencing tools and other ways to interact instead of using it. Like half the time, so to speak, or part of the time.
So I guess I'm asking if there was a widespread and we were at that nine percent and it went online. How would that look differently than the remote piece? Like, are we planning as a district to be? Hey, this is what full online instruction is going to look like if we had to be, because I, I'm thinking that the remote piece. Is different than a full, if the district was fully online would look like. Are we?
I think the difference, like at the high school, the difference would be. Instead of an eight-period day. For for online, like if the whole high school went remote, instead of an eight-period day, we would switch to more of a block schedule. So, you know, having kids like do eight. Periods remotely just seems really kind of cumbersome. So the high school would switch to a block where they'd have half their classes every other day. Middle school wouldn't quite switch to that, but they would have kind of a modified schedule where they'd probably have like. Five classes a day, something like that. So the high school, the high school schedule would probably switch the most, but they're prepared to do that on a moment's notice or preparing. A roundabout schedule is actually going to look somewhat similar if it's in person or if goes fully remote. You know, at the elementary level, I would really like a little bit more time to work with the elementary teachers to get their input. We've just kind of. Really gotten into the remote part with them just recently. So at the elementary, I don't want to get. Extremely concrete, but at the elementary level. My thought is that a learning community of kids. You know, instead of being like partially remote and summer in person, it just switches to all remote. To me, that makes sense. That a teacher's managing both. At the start, because I want them to build a community and we want to maybe change the elementary schedule where they're able to meet the needs of both groups of kids. It also helps the kids who are hybrids, you know, stay connected on the off days. Not the off days, but the remote days. So then my thought is if we have to go all remote, that class just slides right into remote. So I may not be explaining this as well as I should, but we're really trying to design stuff at each level that just can go remote at a moment's notice. I think one of my concerns about the notion that we do like the beacon virtual academy. And like the, and the hybrid academy is that if we do go all remote, it would make dealing with both of those things really tricky. It's all be almost like you'd have two different districts that you're then trying. It's all be almost like you'd have two different districts that you're then trying to merge. And but, I mean, you're getting at, you're getting at what the thing that everyone's thinking about is that is it inevitable that we just have to go all remote at some point? And and that's that's the question that everyone is pondering right now. And I would guess a lot of people feel like it's inevitable.
Can I ask a follow up to that? It's related, I think you kind of answered it with with Anthony's question, but less about the the contingency of an emergency or us all going back. If I could send my kids to hybrid and they have, they're in junior high. Do they have their courses that they're signed up for? If they have a friend who signed up for the same courses, but is going full remote, will they have the same lesson plan, the same teachers, you know? Or maybe another way to look at it is if my kids were in hybrid and then they switched to remote, would they still stay with the same teachers and the same classwork or would that be a totally new schedule?
At the middle school, there might be some tweaks to the schedule, but they would mostly pretty much stay with the same teacher and the same curriculum and the same progress forward.
Okay, so it sounds like for now the hybrid and the remote are pretty in sync in terms of of coursework.
Yeah, I mean, that that, you know, we've we've been working and thinking about this a lot. And in a sense, it's like the only way we can, the only way we feel like we can move forward with this just from a staffing perspective and also just trying to create a model that's fluid is to do it that way. But yeah, that that's that's the thinking right now is that they stay, they stay kind of connected and fluid. Many of our teachers are concerned about how to pull all this off, right? And so so that's what we're trying to work through with the teachers. And so I, and they have many legitimate concerns. So I I I'm not going to pretend that we have this all figured out, but that's that's where we are. And 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 I will also say, like, you know, our teachers are also like, how do we, how can we make this work? And let's figure this out. And they're excited about it, too. Like, it's not, this isn't this, you know, negative challenge, like it's 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 like a new challenge for folks. But yeah, we're trying to keep it all together with the thought of kind of back to what Anthony was saying. If we all have to go full remote, it kind of slides together very nicely. And and we also don't, I mean, people may have different opinions about this, but I, we've been trying to do a lot of community building initiatives, you know, over the last few years, whether it's responsive classroom or restorative practices. And and so I want to sort of start with a foundation in mind of like, if whether you're full remote or hybrid, you're part of a community. You know, you're you're still with your peers, whether it's, you know, through the computer or in person or some version of both. You're still with all your same teachers, you know, we're trying to build that model, however tricky it's going to be.
The concern I have is that the hybrid model is like a ball of yarn where you have a bunch of knots that are getting tangled up and that's going to be our glitch. Whereas are we spreading the district resources so you can come up with a, hey, here's our plan and look, it's a straight line where it's remote? Because it's going to be a when, it's not going to be an if. Like, when is it going to happen? How are we going to do it? And should we be tying our resources to develop a a very comprehensive online program and start that way and see how we could do almost, I don't want to say a phase in because I don't think that's the word. But like, it's, I I drew a picture of a hybrid and I'm working on this in my district of a hybrid model and it looks like a ball of yarn. And for someone that doesn't even work in a, like, I work in the educational field and I, it's confusing. There's so many moving parts, what it's going to happen with this. And, you know, we don't have the answers and I know that, and I'm not expecting you guys to have all the answers and stuff. How can we put our resources to say, okay, listen? Because honestly, if they go in person, I get we cannot mimic in person instruction online. I totally understand there's no replacing for in person. But I also think that at the elementary level, the socialization aspect is going to be a mute point when they're in person anyway, because of the small amount of kids in the classroom, they're not transitioning, the recess component, they have to social distance, it's going to look vastly different. Whereas I I get the socialization piece might be there more at the middle school and high school. But yeah, I'm not seeing, I I'm trying to do the pros and the cons. I'm seeing a lot more cons with, and I, my kids will go in person if it's going to be there. But I'm just looking at it from one point of view of saying, I don't know if it's worth the battle and just come up with the the remote online piece and have it be comprehensive. And I'm on it for in person.
Right, right, right.
That's something that's I've been wondering about, too, just, you know, kind of going through what we need to spend and just keeping track of those expenses because of looking at, you know, so many things that have gotten shoved down to the local level onto school districts. We have all of these additional expenses we're going to have to take on. And then for a certain length of time that I agree with Anthony will pivot probably inevitably, because one of the things that when you were talking about, when you were talking about contact tracing and you were like, well, there would be that sixth grader and that would, or, you know, let's move it to elementary and keep it simple. It'll just be that pod of kids in that one class. But that child also has a sibling, you know, and so they're in a different school and they're with a whole different group of kids. I think that I I, this is not to say that I I'm different than Anthony in that I'm planning to opt for fully remote. Because for me, it's just even having the, having to switch days and I just need like a steady plan for having to work. And I do take very seriously that I think the buildings need to be open and available for children with special ed needs so that they don't regress and so that they will continue to make gains. And also recognizing that they, it's a harder time for their entire family unit sometimes to be managing kids with these things at home. Then I think that there are kids for whom school is the safest, warmest, most connected place and the most likely location for, you know, regular meal. And I know, well, I wanted to sort of separately ask about the meals program and how that will work. But then beyond that, there's kids whose parents have to work outside of the home. So I've been saying my approach is personally, I won't use this, the sort of more colloquial term, but I'll just say lean into the challenge, like this is a challenge that I know and I have some resources and I can have my kids at home because I want to have fewer bodies in the school interacting with the teachers and, you know, taking a space from, I I want those kids to have to be there to be there and that our plans and our resources, our masks, our cleaning surfaces could go towards them. But I feel like that's that's a personal feeling and that's how I've prioritized it. But I do think that, you know, one of the questions that came up is if a kid tests positive and then we have to tell everyone else in contact trace, we're going to be expected as a school district to tell everybody where they can get tested, which means we have to know the places. And having been somebody who needed to get a test and couldn't get tested, it's a, it's a hard thing to kind of go through. So we'll need to know where there's affordable places, where there's places that have tests. Then we'll have to have waiting times for when they come back. And I know that a lot of that's going to fall on your staff. I already see it now. I see the questions that are, that come up in the Zoom chats. And they're not necessarily the purview of the school district, but they're going to become the purview of the school district. So I just, I feel like, I think you've put together a very good plan. I just think that we also have to recognize that it might not last very long and that it'll probably last longer if if fewer people put their kids in the
But I think you make up, make a really good point that there are, you know, for some students, that is the best place for them. And we are lucky in New York that our case is low, is as low as it is right now. We all know that that might change, it might change even before school begins. But, you know, I think it's hard to put so much resource into something that is probably temporary. But at the same time, I think about what, you know, how long a year seems to a child. And if they can get a little bit of in-person learning and connect with their teachers in person, which is, you know, a very different situation than online, I don't think you can put a price on that.
But I think we could do the in-person even on a full remote, whereas a teacher does, hey, let's come to the school this one class and go to the outside classroom or let's do this field trip and stuff. I think there's ways to get the online key. Even for the students with disabilities, there's a way to get them into the school for the extra support where it's low, minimal amount of people and 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 stuff. So that's what I'm saying with the online piece. I don't, it has to be just full online. I think that that we could be creative with supporting the students that need the support and developing a a big piece that could be supportive to individual needs.
Anthony, 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 are there specific online educational platforms you have in mind that you're thinking about? Is that
No, I mean, I mean, there's tons of them out there. I'm not, I'm not going to promote any one of them or or say the the names of anyone. I think that Beacon has the resources of, hey, we we went online last because I had to. I think that they could build on that piece to make it okay, like Dr. Lambo was saying, like, okay, the high school, instead of being eight periods a day, maybe they'll do periods one through four on Monday, periods five through eight on Tuesday, right? And then Wednesday, periods one through four again, then they had periods five through eight. Obviously, their lunch, the study, whatever their schedule is, but they would follow that for every other day, have half their schedule. So they have more time to have that asynchronous instruction piece. And they could do that at the middle school level. And then elementary could set up something where they're doing reading, writing, math every day live and maybe science, social studies every other day, you know? So I I think that there's ways to be creative with the online piece and bolster up what that online looking structure would be. And I separate online from because remote is more, hey, I have in-person kids here and I'm also managing kids remotely. And I think it's different plans.
I don't understand what that means.
The remote
Me, like, we're using kind of the same, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, you're saying.
Well, remote, basically, I look at remote as saying, okay, we have some students that are in person and these are the lessons that we're doing. Now the remote would be, hey, how can the students operate online? How, what, what assignments can I add to them to complete independently? Or, hey, here's a video lesson, oh, here's a a video of a lesson that I did with the inline students and this is what it looked like. And and the student on remote is going to see that piece. Where if it's an online piece, that mean, I'm taking online as being everyone, there's no one in school. And that instruction, I think, would look a little bit different than if it's a hybrid piece with the in-person and kids remote.
Matt, can I, we're kind of related. A question I've heard come up a little bit is people who want to opt out for remote learning but don't have a don't have like a documented health issue or an at-risk person, they're just not comfortable with it. Is that, is that permissible and encouraged? And then also, I guess, a follow up is, is if if there is a benefit to having fewer people in the classroom for people that are kind of on the fence, who might feel like maybe they're doing something wrong by saying that they're, they're choosing for remote, does it actually have any benefit?
You know, districts, I think, have approached this a little bit differently. We, we are taking the route of we're not asking for medical documentation. We're trying to use the Department of Health guidance that came out that, you know, a member with a health issue, the child with a health issue or or uncomfortable returning to school. So my sense of the responses we've gotten, we have about eleven hundred right now. I I haven't seen people having an issue with saying all remote. So and we're, I mean, that's another thing, we're not equipped really to try to assess people's medical reasons anyway. The number is as high as they are. I think some districts are being a little bit more controlling with that. But, you know, this came up in the elementary Zoom today. I think that's sort of a personal decision that people would make. I'm not going to say do one for the team and keep your kid at home, you know, for someone else who needs to be in person like that. I think that's more of a personal sort of thing that someone might have. You know, I, just back to the larger conversation. You know, it, for lack of a better word, this is basically like an obsession right now, trying to figure all this stuff out. And and you guys talking is sort of like my mental internal chatter every day and night and sometimes in the middle of the night when I'm up. So, you know, I think all the same things and have a lot of the same concerns. I and this is just me, you know, I, and this is why I think I've been trying to push this forward is I I struggle with just, like, I understand the argument, like, just go remote and make it really great. And I I know you're saying something more complex than that, Anthony. So I'm kind of kind of not really doing it justice, but I I struggle with not attempting to have kids come in. Just like, whatever we do, we know we're going to do better than last spring. And I'm not saying, you know, we had a lot of amazing efforts last spring. I'm not, I'm not being critical when I say that, but we have time to plan and think about it this time around. But I I struggle just seeing kids out and about. Kids, I know that the not being in school was really tough on a lot of kids. And I struggle from from a superintendent level of not trying. You know, but I, and this kind of leads to an interesting question because I'm kind of plowing forward with like, we're offering hybrid and we're offering this remote. And, you know, we're trying to create a thing that could easily switch into, to use Anthony's terminology, like online for everyone. So we're trying to and working on planning for all of that and and to to create a model that kind of not is kind of that's fluid and can go back and forth. And one that we try to build community with our kids and have them feel a part of the community. So so I've always, that's been my goal. I'm starting to see a handful of other districts sort of announcing that they're starting fully remote. And that they'll switch over to some sort of hybrid in October. I I don't have a list for you, but it's starting to pop up. I don't, I I don't personally know what will be different in October than than September. You know, because we have several weeks left to plan and get things in place. But if if so I don't know, I started throwing this back to the board, I don't know how y'all want to do this. It's kind of an interesting thing that these plans don't, don't like legally require board approval, you know? And and but obviously, I'm trying to work really closely with you all and and hash this out. So I don't know if you know what I'm getting at, but like, but if we want to do something different that we do that way, I maybe need more input from you or another conversation or continue this conversation or something. Because I would want to start shifting, you know, and getting the community ready for that. I mean, I think all the community knows it could go all remote at any moment's notice because of an outbreak. But, I mean, we are getting seventy percent, around seventy percent of our families opting right now for the hybrid. And that's a pretty large number. So you understand where I'm getting at, like, I maybe need direction from you all. These are all great questions. I I didn't take, I'm not offended by any of them. Anytime a parent asks you a question, I don't get offended or a teacher or a staff member. This is like the most challenging time I think any school district's ever been in. It's a, it's a historic time. So like, this is, this is what we're doing and thinking through every day.
I think a lot of what you
Go ahead, Kristen. Okay, can I ask you, for parents who don't, who don't make a choice, who don't send in the form, are they automatically going to be registered for for all online?
We haven't actually decided that. I I I think what we would assume is we'd register them for hybrid. But I think what we try to do over the next several weeks is to track them down and get an answer. We have, we have staff available to do that, so I prefer to do that, you know, and not just be really confused at the beginning of the year. I mean, our, I know a lot of people want more information to make a decision. We already have a lot of people that have already kind of indicated what their decision is. So I'm feeling pretty hopeful we can get, we can close this out in terms of finding out what every family is thinking. So I'm feeling pretty hopeful we can get, we can close this out in terms of finding out what every family is thinking.
Okay, this is kind of, um, changing tracks a little bit. Um, but it's, uh, you know, we had a wellness committee, uh, planning meeting this morning. And, um, I know in one of the presentations that you had done, you had talked about, um, you know, uh, planning, uh, with the, you know, with district mental health professionals and, and, you know, future plans to sort of address the unique set of needs that students are gonna come into the school with. And I was wondering, um, if we can hear a little bit about those plans, how that's working? Or, you know, does it involve additional resources or new resources? Or, you know, in terms of, of staffing or programs and, you know, how you're anticipating that looking? I'd really, I'd really like to know more about that.
Uh, I mean, some of it is focusing on some of the things we're already doing, like responsive classroom and restorative practices. Um, and we had another large group of elementary teachers trained. Uh, part of it is bringing our mental health professionals in early to plan so they can work with their school staffs. Because I think, I think this, this can't, I know, you know, I know people have a diff, you know, differing skill sets with this, but, uh, tending to the emo- social emotional needs of our students can't be the job of one or two people in a building, especially with this happening. And so we'd really need, that's why I want that additional time for staff at the beginning of the year because I'm envisioning a fair chunk of that time being preparing all of our, um, all of our, uh, you know, staff are dealing with, uh, the emotional, the emotional needs coming in. Um, we, we have, um, you know, uh, kids having really strong and appropriate feelings about, um, you know, uh, Black Lives Matter and, and, you know, George Floyd and many others getting killed and seeing that on TV and, you know, wanting to talk about that, uh, when they come back and, and what it means for them as an individual and what it means for them in the school. We have kids worried about, uh, catching the virus or, you know, do I have the right mask on? Or, you know, just, do I feel safe? I mean, I'm envisioning the first, really, several weeks of the year being not so much focused on just jumping in the curriculum, but just really going slow and helping people feel safe. So I, probably my large motivation for changing up and giving teachers more time at the beginning of the year is to really get some training and planning around how to create, you know, some really safe spaces for kids. I mean, just as a dad, uh, and I know you've probably, everyone's experienced this as parents, like, we, we did a little traveling last week and we, you know, just to be clear, traveled to the States on the safe list, so we don't have to quarantine or anything. But my son was extremely cautious and observant of some places we went. People were not as into wearing masks as what he's used to seeing in New York. And, uh, you know, I think as, as adults, we kind of can work through that a little bit and just move on. Uh, but he, he was blown away. And, you know, obviously, we're not gonna be seeing that in school, but it just made me think how every, uh, child is in a different place. Uh, every one of our young people is in a different place around basic health issues. Uh, you know, reintegrating if they're doing hybrid with their peers in person, if they haven't been seeing a lot of friends. Um, fears about that and also just, uh, fears, concerns. Um, a lot of really justified feelings about the state of our country and community, um, around issues like race. Um, so there's a lot. So, you know, we're not gonna do it perfectly, but we're trying to bring, like, all of our experts in early to plan, to do a lot of training and supporting all of our staff. I think my main message to the staff is this is not the job of just a couple of guidance counselors and a social worker or a school psychologist, like, this is everybody. This is an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. And everybody has feelings about this. And I think, I, I think us adults have found ways to, like, talk about this with our friends and our peers and our colleagues. And I honestly think a lot of our kids haven't. And, and again, speaking as a dad, I would probably label my family as being a little bit more on the cautious side with playdates and whatnot. And, but when we do do one outside, we see, again, I hate to talk about my son, but I think this is part of what everyone's gonna experience, like, he's a little more cautious when he's getting together with friends because he's not used to it as much. And, uh, so we're gonna be integrating, like, hundreds of kids into, like, not being used to being used to a class and they have a mask on. And so it's daunting, uh, but I also think there's a benefit, um, to trying. And there's a benefit to trying to have some of that in-person human contact, um, if we can pull it off. And I think we can. But sorry, I kind of rambled into a long thing there, but it, it's huge for us. And I think also, um, you know, we're building PD into tho- those Remote Wednesdays. And so I think part of that PD, I think half of that PD is gonna be, uh, how to be a great online teacher, kind of what Anthony's getting at, that Roy's preparing for the inevitable, uh, or what people are calling the inevitable. And then the other part of it is, how do we deal with all these feelings and emotions? And I, the thing, I think the last thing I want to say is it's not just for the kids coming through our doors, it's also for the kids who are choosing the all-remote. And, uh, you know, I'm reading a lot of stuff right now online about ways to, uh, make kids feel welcome in an online environment and, and not being so rules-oriented. You know, I'm seeing these districts that are a little bit ahead of us and they're doing, like, dress codes for online. And you have to have your video on the entire time or you're not counted as present. You know, we wanna, we wanna honor the individuals be, you know, in all of this and provide some flexibility for kids. Because I think we all, as adults, have had moments where we need to turn the video off uh, or mute ourselves for a little bit, you know, or whatever. But, uh, but I, I, we want to make sure we're attending to the emotional needs of our, of our students who are, who are, you know, staying at home and going all remote. Because I, I, I mean, this is probably my biggest worry with all of this is just, uh, I really worry about the emotional state of everyone, to be quite honest.
Well, I, I think to that point, as far as your, um, description of, I, I think the fact that seventy percent are opting to come in person says a lot about the confidence in the plan that you have and the measures you've put into place. I, I think probably where, um, when you're saying you're looking for a direction from us, I can just say, from my perspective personally, I feel more, um, kind of protective of everything that you have all been doing in the sense that what I see in terms of communication is a lot of like, well, well, they didn't get this right or this, they don't know about this or why haven't they addressed that or why isn't this figured out yet? And I, and I think that that's the piece that we really, you know, that I would urge the community to really think about, which is, nobody's ever done this before, really. You know, I see a lot of examples of what happened during the, um, polio epidemic and the, um, flu pandemic. But, you know, what we don't have is a nationally coordinated plan. We do not have, and we also do not have agreement of everyone in our community about how real the threat is, how, um, how to really address it. You know, I think masks are now commonly accepted, but maybe if we had done this at a different time, they wouldn't be. So I think that there's a lot of, it's not just on you and the administration, administrators and the teachers. It is on all of us as a community to prioritize the ne- needs of kids and to prioritize each other. And I'm wondering if, what kind of mental and emotional supports are there for teachers and administrators too? Are you guys getting circles or any sort of support in that way? Because I've seen a lot of anxiety from teachers about going back into the classroom and then their kids being in a different school and they're having sort of double exposure. So I think that, I, I think that, you know, a lot of the questions that are appearing can't be answered until this starts rolling along. I think that if you feel that you've put as much thought into it and this seems like it works and I, I personally want to support and vacuum in it, I just think that for the community, this can't be a gotcha, they didn't think of this. It has to be like this grace and understanding that we all need to solve this problem together. It's a collective action problem and that's a great example for our kids. But I feel like it requires grace and compassion and understanding and respecting that other people make personal choices and it's not a judgment on your choice. And that if there's something you see that you feel is important, communicate it. You don't have to, like, blast it on Facebook as people not getting it. You know, just like you said about just that report that came out today about masks. That's important information and we're all responsible to share it with each other.
Yeah, no, I, um, yeah, I, I mean, we, sometimes we're so, I mean, like everyone else, I'm not trying to make us special, but we're so busy on all of our Zooms and whatnot that someone may reference something that came out earlier in the day and I haven't even seen it. You know, like about the mask study, so we need to look at that and get some guidance from, from our Department of Health folks too. But, um, no, I, I, um, I mean, you know, maybe, uh, maybe a little bit later into August, we feel like we need a little bit more time at the start of the year to really make it, to, to really iron out some of the kinks. And I come back to the board as we try to really solidify a schedule on August, uh, twenty-fourth. You know, to, that, that we need a few more days or something to really, to, to, if we feel like, to make it work. But, um, I, it's, it's a, it's kind of a crazy place to be in. And, uh, but it's a, it's a place for us to exercise, you know, some new skills and really try not to take things personally and, uh, to keep listening and keep working on stuff. And so, again, you know, back to my sort of thing a long time ago, um, you can also just write me an email too and I will, I will do my best to answer it. And, uh, and we need to put this FAQ up so people can just sort of go to places with the answers. Um, but, uh, but yeah, there's a, a lot we are working on right now and this is gonna evolve over time, for sure.
Matt, I have a question. I'm sorry to go back to something that I feel like we kind of covered already earlier, but, um, my question is, as far as, like, if someone in the community tests positive, does it, is, does it have to be a student or a teacher or someone who works in one of the buildings testing positive to trigger a, um, you know, sending people home? I mean, what, what happens if a parent comes forward and says they tested positive? Does that parent's child's class then have to go home? I know these are the unanswerable questions or, you know, we can't foresee every scenario. But, um, when Kristen mentioned before that a kid in sixth grade or a kid in fourth grade might have a brother in middle school and a sister in high school, um, it just triggered, you know, that domino effect of, of possibilities.
Um, so my understanding of the Department of Health guidelines and, and, uh, and they're coming out, it's unfortunately county by county, but I think they're starting to see what the, you know, they're starting to kind of copy from each other, but they're starting to give us flow charts and like really easy to use things. My understanding of that is, like, what triggers an automatic quarantining, uh, or contact tracing, I should say, which would lead to quarantining, is a positive case of a student or staff member. Um, not like a relative of somebody, like, that does not trigger an automatic, um, contact tracing quarantining. That's my understanding. I mean, we, we meet with the Department of Health folks pretty much every week and we're always kind of getting clarity on all of this. And, you know, we, we worry about them getting overwhelmed the first couple of weeks of the year with like a million questions from us. And so that's why we're trying to kind of work a lot of this out ahead of time, but that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
This is, uh, I have a question that's kind of, uh, related to that. I had seen, um, I don't know if this is in the FAQ that's currently up, um, or, or somewhere else sort of talking about, um, you know, employee guidelines. Um, and so they're suppo- so employees have to answer a questionnaire every morning, correct? Before they come to school?
Yeah.
And then, so if they, if they ans- so is the idea that there's, they're answering this questionnaire and then they're sending it to someone and someone is, is, is looking to see if they've answered yes to any of those questions or how does that work exactly?
I mean, with, with employees, it's a little bit of an honor system, but we, it, it's, it's sort of an interesting legal area. It's because due to HIPAA, we're not really privy to their, anyone's medical information. Um, and so it's like, we would be tracking whether people are answering it and, and then training people to, if you have any of these symptoms, that you stay home.
Matt, can I also mention that it's an automatic, that if they do answer yes, there is an email system that's sent? It's almost like a red email that'll go to, um, a building-level administrator and to, and to our nurse manager.
Okay.
Alerting us. So there is an, and that's all done automatically.
Okay.
And, and Maria's been working with the school nurses on this one more closely than I have been. So thanks for jumping in.
No problem.
Hey, Matt, I wanted to ask, um, you know, I've actually done a little bit of background work on this in preparation for the next policy committee, um, but it, it really should probably begin with a conversation with you, but you've been out, you were out of town on vacation, which is good. Um, but Bill, Dr. Ralon and I, in preparation for the next policy committee, we're just kind of throwing out ideas with legal about mask requirements and if there is anything that can be done on the board level. Um, we were drafting up potential language, um, for review for the committee, uh, to look at having something in the dress code that would define clearly what masks, uh, are appropriate and sort of where they fit on the, the restorative process. You know, what, basically to answer the question is, is what happens if a student doesn't wear a mask or doesn't want to wear a mask? What does that process look like? Um, how, like, I know there's a, some conversation I've heard, uh, that's not entirely clear about.
Our power almost went out, so, and I think James is in the same area as.
Mine.
We are, so we might have lost him. He's frozen there.
Matt, do you want to?
Here's the power flip.
Yep, me too.
Could you tell what he was asking?
Uh, yeah, I, um, I, you know, I've, we've had a lot, I've had a lot of conversations about this with my colleagues. The general consensus is we don't want to overdo, like, additions to the code of conduct because of the changes, but I know there's a lot of concern about masks from the staff side. And so I think, I, I do think adding some clarity or mask-wearing would be helpful. So I think that's something that we will be working on. Um, yeah, I mean, I, you know, we're in this, we're in kind of an interesting place because, like, we have this hybrid in person, but also remote. And so if someone is really struggling wearing a mask, then it really seems like they should just move to remote if their struggle is kind of a personal choice, you know, and not, not like a, a health need or a special need. And, and so, um, you know, so, so that's, but that we need to iron that out so we're not just kind of winging it at the beginning of the year. And that is a, it's a big concern with teachers, for sure.
Does anybody else have any questions for Matt?
Um, definitely want to encourage everyone, both public and board members, to keep communicating. You know, this is, this is a lot for everyone. And I think that what I hope is clear is that this is really, you know, taking into consideration the seriousness of the situation and wanting to keep everyone safe and healthy. That's a complicated ask. And, um, so, you know, the solution is gonna be imperfect, but I think the best intentions are there. Um, could I have a motion to move to executive session to, um, to review the employment history of a particular individual?
I'll, I'll make the motion, but, uh, because of the power outage, uh, it's gonna take me five or 10 minutes to get everything reset here. So, uh, it, the power just went out, came back on and everything is resetting. So I'll have to go find that email message for the invite, so give me a little while.
Okay, Craig, for you. So Kristen made the motion second.
I'll second. Craig made the motion, I'll second.
What motion are we on? Sorry, I just got.
Executive session.
Move to executive session. Any?
I'm just guessing, did I, did Matt make an answer to the question that I did when I was asking?
He did respond to your.
We're, we need to work on that. I agree.
Okay, great. We'll talk. Thanks.
Any comments and questions about the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Closed? Okay, we will be back in about, um, half hour, 40 minutes. Let's review the agenda there. A few changes to note, item 11.05, non-instructional personnel, there's a title change for B1. Item 1106 instructional agenda additions, item I10 and item P. And then item 1117 resolution 081120C policy and COVID-19 reopening plans has been removed. Are there any questions about that? Are there any student or school presentation? Being none, are there any parent groups that would like to speak? Seeing none. Matt, you talked a lot, but do you have a superintendent's report?
No, I, I talked for an hour and a half, but just a reminder that I am doing, I sent out the link, um, email, to my list, um, that I'm doing a conversation about reopening with the Highlands Current tomorrow at seven o'clock.
Thanks. Okay, board, board comments and committee reports. Can we start with facilities? Kristen?
I actually don't have anything to report. I've left facilities alone for a while because they have a lot on their plate. But Matt, would you like to set the next date or do we want to meet this Wednesday? No, that's tonight, tomorrow, and you have the Highland Current thing. So next Wednesday? You're muted.
Sorry, let's set the date. Um, I'm.
I'm actually not here.
You're not here, what?
Next week.
Okay, um, let's do the week after.
I'm not here the week after, but you guys, I don't have to be there, I suppose.
Maybe I'll never come back and I won't be here that week either. Okay, well, there you go. Uh, let me look at that.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
Uh, the facilities committee. Next meeting.
What was the date?
I'm looking it up. Sorry, my calendar is taking forever load. I'm so sorry. Now my calendar is just loading on days, not months. Why? Why is this happening? So that is the 26th for, um, Wednesday, the 26th? Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Anthony, are you, your other facility is right? Can you make that date? Okay, so I won't be there, but you guys can.
Okay. And I don't have anything else.
Jane?
Hi, yeah. Um, so for policy committee, I just, this past week or so, had my own little window into, um, I don't want to use the word chaos, let's say the, uh, the dynamic nature of, uh, of the reopening plan. We, Dr. Ralon and Legal and I had prepared, um, all of the policies that we're going to need to update for COVID, uh, for our next policy committee meeting, which was scheduled for this Wednesday. We then received the resolution that was on the agenda for tonight from NISBA that essentially was blanket language to remove the urgency. So we don't need to change the policies. So we canceled that meeting on Wednesday night. Really with the thinking that with the urgency removed, that really the district needs to be focusing its resources on the reopening plan and that we could push those policies that need to be uh, updated just a couple of weeks down the road to give them some space. But then today I learned from, uh, our legal team has now revised its recommendations. And the resolute, the blanket resolution is my understanding as of now is no longer ideal for the district. So luckily we've already done the legwork with legal to get the draft languages, but we've already canceled the meeting for this week. So what we need to do is we need to schedule a meeting, a policy committee meeting before the next board meeting, to review those policies as originally, uh, as originally planned. So luckily we have it all. But we need to schedule a, a new meeting. So apologies for the, the back and forth. I was trying to, to make things easier and it seems to have backfired. I know that we had kind of had some back and forth about possible dates and I know there's not a perfect date next week. But can you, I remember the day, the 17th being a day that, that some people could, said they could come. Am I making that up? Alyssa, Meredith, Anthony.
I'm on vacation starting Saturday.
Okay. And when do you come back?
The 22nd.
Okay. So it seems like there's not going to be a date next, I mean, we have to do it next week because the, the next meeting is on the 24th.
Can it be an abbreviated meeting? Does it have to be the full, like, we have to cover this one policy? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, we actually have about six. So basically anywhere that there's a conflict between the reopening plan and our current policies, we had gone through every single one of those policies and it's about, I think, seven different policies I can look at. Um, anywhere where there's a, a major conflict, we resolve that by temporarily updating the policy. And then when we go back to normal, in some cases we'll return the policy and some of them, we're just adding additional language that makes room for both. The idea, there was a resolution that was on the, the agenda for tonight, that I believe has been removed from the, I saw as it was strucken out. That would have been a blanket, would have been a blanket policy basically, so that we, we don't have to review every single one.
Right.
That's no longer the case. So, uh, it, I don't know, that has to take long. You know, there were certainly a few other policies that would take more time. Those wouldn't be on this agenda. I think it could be, I could streamline it if you think that. What do you think, Alyssa?
I think it's important and I think we, you, we need a quorum, right?
Well, if Anthony, between Anthony, Meredith, myself and you, Alyssa, we need three.
Right. Do we have, do you have three without me?
Meredith, Anthony?
I can do the 17th. He's just fine.
17th? So we could, well, I think we'll set it for the 17th, Alyssa, if you're okay with that?
That's fine. I, I would rather not do a meeting while I'm on vacation. So.
I would rather that too.
So if you guys can do it without me, I'm, that's fine. If you, if you absolutely need me though, I, I mean, obviously I'm not going to Mars. I'll just be at the Jersey Shore. So, and I'll have a computer so I can log on.
That sounds nice and I will, I will do my best to not make that happen.
Okay.
All right. So the 17th, 7:00 PM, does that work? Um, Matt and, and Bill team? Okay, great. So we'll, we'll have that policy. And then, uh, Bill, if you could send out those, those drafts, just the, just the ones related to COVID specific. Okay, great. And that's all my comments except just to say, um, my continued support and admiration with the admin team in the district. You guys are just still knocking it out of the park and I don't understand how you're still saying. So, so keep it up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anthony?
So the curriculum committee has not met, um, since the last board meeting. I will ask Eric to share on the curriculum, uh, calendar with me for the year. And once I get that, I will share it with the rest of the board. Um, you heard Matt talk about instructional plans during, um, during the workshop. Um, I must say I am disappointed that we didn't meet in person tonight. I thought that if we're talking about a hybrid and bringing 200 kids into a school, why we couldn't get, uh, 13 people in auditorium, social difference for masks and have people in auditorium, it's not that hard to set up. So I am disappointed about that piece. I think it goes to, one, the symbolism of the district. You know, I know that there was concern by board, a, a board member about, you know, having someone at high risk, but yet, you know, I know that they've been participating in protests and stuff as well. So I'm just confused as to when and why aren't we meeting in person? Are curriculum, uh, are the committee meetings going to be in person or are they going to be remote as well?
We have not discussed what the committee meetings, whether or not they'll be in person or not, but we certainly can. And I think we're working on figuring out a plan to do the, um, second meeting in August in person. So stay tuned for news there. Craig, do you have any comments to share?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, uh, it would be good to set the meeting for the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee, since we just did that for Facilities and Operations. It usually works to tag team with that meeting unless Kristen is thinking we're going to be going excessively long. I hope not. Because, uh, you know, some of us can participate in both meetings. So how about if we do it right after that one?
Yeah, but I don't think that we expect to go long. I, I'd have to talk to Matt, but we can try to, we can do our best to make sure that we, um, are moved quickly, even if we have a big agenda.
We can, we can do.
Or start early.
We can do both.
Or start early.
Sounds good. Okay. So let's, uh, make that for the same date, which is the 26th, right? And that would be the 8:15. 8:15. Okay, good. Um, so, um, we have an opportunity to meet with a congressman. Unfortunately, I will not be available on the 13th. I gather that Floris Stadler might be. Is that right?
I'm going to do it.
Did I read the email right?
Yeah.
Meredith is going to be?
Meredith is available.
I had already signed up for it, back from anybody. So I can see, um, I can totally see if I can transfer it to you. I'd be happy to. That'd be great.
I'll leave it to the two of you to decide. Maybe you can both go. So, uh, anyway, I wish I could do it. He's, um, he's pretty easy to talk to and I think you'll have a good conversation. Speaking of politics, um, you know, most of the news is looking pretty bad, uh, from Washington. Um, and I think that, um, you probably all have seen the reports about how talks pretty much collapsed and then our, uh, president decided to, uh, I think play some games with the constitution and issue some dubious executive orders, most of which are not, um, not going to be working out very well, uh, because of complications, either lawsuits or because states have to pony up some money that they don't have. So we'll have to see how that works out, but it, it means that on the federal level, you can hope that they decide to come to their senses and get back to the drawing boards. It doesn't look good. I heard Mitch McConnell, the, uh, Republican leader of the Senate indicate that about half of his members didn't seem to want to play baseball. So that was bad news. And if we don't get aid from the federal government, then a very ugly ball lands in Andrew Cuomo's court. Gosh, I can't stop using sports analogies, can I? But anyway, um, he's been resistant to other means of funding school districts. And we're still waiting to see what happens with the money question. And when we see what does happen or doesn't happen, we'll be able to respond to it in some fashion. But right now I don't have any big recommendations to offer because we don't know exactly where that, uh, that deal is going to land, but it doesn't look good. The last I heard from, uh, inside the district is we probably survive this year. But it looks like it could be really tough in, uh, years after that, as, uh, the chickens come home to roost. So I'd like to hear some more, if, if there's anything new updates from the superintendent or from, uh, our CFO to, uh, guide us any further. So after we're done with the board comments, if they wish to bring us any news or updates on that end, we'll be happy to hear it, even if it's bad news. One other thing I have to say is that, um, I had a big power outage, not the little blip tonight. That really scared me because not again, please, not again. We lost power at our house, which is in the neighborhood of the Sergeant Avenue, where a massive tree belonging to the Beacon City School District fell on the power lines and took out at least a hundred and change uh, for anywhere from Tuesday afternoon to Friday night. And it occurred to me that we have some work to do, looking at the trees that we own. Many of them are just ready to collapse on a power line, either on Sergeant Avenue or perhaps in some of our other properties. And these are beyond the reach of Central Hudson's usual trimming program. The tree that broke this time was the big old sycamore, which I would have thought was probably safe, but it wasn't. And it was such a bad collapse that it actually landed on the lines with sufficient force to transmit that force to the nearest utility pole and cracked that pole as well. Quite a bit of liability here and I think we need to take a look at that. So, um, I'm hoping that we can put that on the agenda for our next facilities meeting and see what kind of steps we might be able to take. So.
Yeah, that sounds good. Also, you can always email that. That would be great to hear about that stuff that way.
There might, can I just ask a question about that? I've, I've heard stories, uh, but I've actually never checked with anyone from the Historical Society that most of those larger trees were actually planted by, by John Singer Sargent, uh, the brother of, of, no, he seemed pretty solid.
It might be, Henry Wirth from Sargent is the one that's, uh, of local interest.
Well, his brother, so John, John Singer Sargent was his brother.
They're related.
Yeah. And my, anyway, I, I heard that the, the planting those trees might have some historical significance, is my point.
I think I'd be willing to sacrifice it.
Okay, thanks, Craig. Uh, Craig, I don't know if you heard, but I will not be at the PR meeting on the 26th. I will still be out of town for that. Flora, any comments?
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, we, uh, meaning myself, um, Dr. Ralon and Karen Pagano, we had a planning meeting, um, this morning just to talk about what we want the wellness committee, um, to, to focus on this year. And I think, um, as with so many plans for the district, I think it's the kind of thing that we're going to know more, um, you know, as we're in it, where the needs lie. But I, I do want to say, just on a, on a personal note, as, and as someone focusing on the wellness aspect, I am really heartened to know that we, you know, we're putting thought into, um, serving students' social emotional needs going into this and, you know, having professional development, um, around that. I think that that's really important and, um, I would like to offer and I hope that, um, the wellness committee can act as a bridge to sort of, um, help, uh, rally, uh, community resources around that to, um, you know, sort of stay informed at what's happening at the building level, level in terms of, helping students address those needs and to maybe come up with, uh, you know, um, new, uh, and useful ways to, to serve students in those, in those realms moving forward. I, I got a little bit of information from, from Karen about, uh, what's going on with the meals program, but I know it's still, uh, a work in progress. Um, and obviously there's, you know, focus on making sure that students who need lunches get lunches. And I believe, um, and I will, I will confirm this language, uh, for sure, um, next time we meet. But, uh, students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch meals, um, you know, there will be an opportunity. you know, there will be an opportunity for bulk distribution on Wednesdays at RMS and at BHS times TBD. But, you know, there, there, the planning for that is underway. So we are tentatively planning a meeting for late September, early October, just waiting to see how things go. And we will schedule a meeting and publicize it then. So that's all from me.
Thanks. Anthony?
Good evening. Again, I echo the thanks to everyone who's trying to make this September work. You know, it's a moving target. The Diversity Committee had a meeting on the 22nd of July, and it was actually a very welcomed meeting. There were a lot of people that missed the Diversity Committee meetings, and we're looking forward to continuing to meet again. There were quite a few updates that we're giving. I will just touch on, mention some of them, but I'll just go in depth on just one of them. The concerns over lack of curriculum was one. And Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, if I misquoted anything, but he's been talking to Dr. Hunter from SUNY Buffalo on culture responsive pedagogy and as well as conducting a limited audit that will include the, you know, whether, how many women and African-American authors that we are using in our curriculum. And then also different projects as well, creating a template to-
I'm on the phone.
Template for, in terms of how the history is being taught from six, and then there's a pilot, I guess, right now for just the ELA and Social Studies, but it'll hopefully expand soon. Using tools like Diversity Toolkit, Facing History, and other teacher tolerance platforms. And then other topics that we, that we, that we talked about was the hiring process. Another one was Code of Conduct and Student Conversations Using the Circle Process. It was mentioned that apparent circles will also happen. And we also mentioned Training of All Staff and the Additive Report Card. So again, generally glad we were meeting again. There was optimism in the air, gratitude of what was done so far, acknowledgement that the work will continue, and we may be uncomfortable at times, and looking forward to the next meeting. The next meeting was not set. Obviously, there's competing interests out there in terms of everyone's time. So when the next meeting is announced, you know, I look forward to that. I'm sure a bunch of people will also look forward to that. One thing I do want to ask, though, is that I do get asked a lot about the Diversity Committee and what they're doing. And they are folks that contact me directly because they know I'm on the Diversity Committee. You know, and I kind of go through some stuff with them of what was done, but it would be helpful if, and I know some of the other committees have, have webpages, but it, and I do type notes for the meetings. I haven't, you know, I could do, I could go from, from now on, I could do it religiously, where I can type notes, have the administration just check to make sure it's accurate, and then post them on the website so that people can actually see what we're doing and not just rely on me to, to talk about it.
Yeah, we, we can work with you on that. That's a good idea.
Okay. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Alyssa?
I'm sorry, a moment ago, I didn't realize that I was not on mute when I yelled at my child for trying to speak to me during a meeting. I have a very brief update on the Glenn and Mills property, if you bear with me. The Glenn and Mills property, for those who may not know, is the former Texasco Beacon Research Facility in Fishkill. The latest update is that they've submitted the remedial investigation report to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to the State Department of Health. Once it is accepted, it will be available in the Blodgett Memorial Library in Fishkill, if anyone would like to read it. And there are no real estate updates for the property at this time, which I guess means they haven't had any new interest.
I think it just means that it's not, nothing's public.
Yeah. I don't have anything to report on a committee. I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Thank you, Matt, and to your staff for doing this work. There are no easy answers, and we appreciate what you're doing for us. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Alyssa. Sorry for editorializing the Glenn and Mills report.
No, that, I didn't, it didn't occur to me that it just means nothing has made, been made public.
I think that is the deal.
Maybe someone is interested in the Fishkill, Texasco property.
They, they're not telling us. So we have some unfinished business to deal with. The first item is the lease renewal for the Duchess Stadium. This is a one-year extension of our existing lease with the idea that we will be negotiating the sale of the stadium property. Are there any questions about it? There's no, and I asked Dan Pedagro for an update. He had not, there's no, nothing on the calendar for that negotiation to start, but he's working on it. Okay, so if there are no questions, we do need to vote on it. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Duchess Stadium lease renewal extension.
Anthony, motion.
Oh. Kristen? Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed eight to zero. The second item is to discuss the appointment of a new board member. We agreed out of the four options at the last meeting to not to leave the seat empty or go for the special election or have the Boasie Superintendent to appoint a board member for us, but to go through an appointment process ourselves. So I emailed everyone a proposed calendar for this. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it, as well as the language that we had, the questions that we sent out for the application the last time we went through this. Did anyone have a chance to take a peek at this?
Yes.
So how do you, the, let me just look at what it says so the public knows. My proposal was that we use the questions that we, unless anyone has an additional question that they want to ask, but the application is, is pretty straightforward. It, you know, asks for your address. It, it lists the qualifications to make sure applicants qualify. And then three, three questions were, please let us know the reasons for your application to be a member of the Board of Education. Number two, what do you feel you would bring to the Board of Education of the BCSD? And number three, what is your vision for the BCSD? If we agree to keeping those questions, then I propose that we give until September 4th for applications. And then at the September 14th board meeting, each applicant would make a public statement and answer questions from the board, and we could discuss them that night in executive session. Hopefully, we would be making a decision at the September 29th meeting.
I wouldn't want to change the questions, but I would like to just add that we suggest, because a lot of work's been done since those questions were created. So I'd like to suggest that applicants review the strategic plan and the board goals and, you know, maybe frame their vision around that because not, I mean, they're not to frame it exactly around that, but I, I think it's just helpful to sort of recognize that a lot of work has been going into envisioning how we proceed and how they, if, you know, if they want to join that or what their vision for joining that is.
Do you want to change the language in the application, or do you, is that just something you want to put out there?
To add that, that we suggest reading that, you know.
To direct them to the strategic plan.
Yeah, and the board goals.
And board goals.
Do we, and maybe it'd be helpful just to have, I mean, kind of like Kristen says, but like, sort of like a list of resources, you know, maybe not so much of like, we require you do this, but like, here's a list of links that you would be interested in. I think that's a great idea.
I think the, yeah, I think those two things are really great because that is a large part of the work we've done over the past four years since I've been on the board. Any other thoughts or suggestions? Yes, Anthony?
I'd like to add a diversity question.
Okay. Do you, do you know how the wording would go now, or do you want to email it? You're also, you will be able to ask questions to the applicants when they speak to the board. So it's, it's up to you whether or not you want it to be included in the application or just ask it in person or-
I, I think the application would be good because I think it would help upfront to prepare the applicant to such questions.
Okay. Do you want to send me a question to add, or do you want to, do you want to wordsmith it right now?
I can think about better language. I haven't eaten anything, so I'm not really-
Yeah, I'm-
I can't deny the importance of, of that, but I feel like that's one of our board goals. And I think that if we're going to point in the direction of that, then we kind of have to, I mean, that's the framework. Our goals are the framework that we use to interview our superintendent. And it, you know, every question was important.
Well, we can, I mean, we can delay, we could, you know, we could rewrite the questions altogether around our board goals, which is fine. We just delay the schedule a little bit.
Okay.
Because I think I, I want to give at least, you know, two meetings for the word to get out and for people to be able to send back in their applications.
I personally, I feel like the questions aren't perfect, but to be honest, the application is, is going to be a very small part. It's just going to give, I mean, from my perspective, it'll give us, you know, our first introduction to somebody who will really, like, we'll have time to talk to them in person. So, I don't know, I, it feels like putting it off just to rewrite the questions might not be the best use of, of our time, is my sense.
Will we meet with, will we talk with everyone who submits an application, or are we picking the, are we-
So everyone who submits an application will be required actually to make a public statement to, to, or a statement to the board in public. Anthony, do you remember, was there a time limit on it, or?
No, then there was, and there could be questions asked of the board, of, from board members to the applicant. I know the last time we did it, we had, I think, six or seven people. But there were, I mean, the questions, we try and tailor the follow-up questions to be pretty similar. As with any interview or something, you want the question to be similar, see how people answer it. But, I mean, there would be some way, sometimes where the candidate would answer a certain way, and you need clarification. So board members felt free to ask the questions, and then the board discussed it.
So I'm fine either way, leaving, I mean, I think it is really good to give them some resources because I think if someone has not been paying attention to what's been going on with the board or even how a meeting goes, you know, it'd be good to give them at, at least a starting place.
Yeah, and if somebody's, if you're recruiting anybody or getting people interested, I think that's also an important thing to let them know that, that it's important to watch meetings and really have, you know, it helps to have an understanding of how things flow. And otherwise, you don't really know what you're, what you're joining.
Yeah, I mean, I had watched, I had attended meetings in person for two years before I got on the board, and it was still, you know, the running of the meeting itself, you know, there was a learning curve, so.
I, I think one of the, hello? I think one of the logical questions, and maybe this is just a statement that's included in the literature that we put out there, is are you prepared to attend school board meetings, join committee or two, and go through the required training to become a school board member af, well, after you get elected or appointed, you have to go through the training. And then there's the newest one, which is, how are you with Zoom?
So maybe, I mean, it sounds like maybe our application needs a little bit of work. Do you think, Craig, you could take that on with the PRL Committee? Since you guys will be meeting?
That's not a bad idea. There's a number of ideas here tonight, and I think maybe we can make it a, a better process by adding a few questions. The ones we have are okay as far as they go. But I, I think a lot of people really don't understand what's involved in being on the school board. And maybe we ought to give them a heads up as to what that actually looks like, you know?
Meredith, I would just ask if, if a committee's going to work on adjusting it, and it should come to the full board prior to going out, then?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
It would be a draft that would then be approved by the full board, that, absolutely. So, so PR Committee is meeting on the 26th. When, when are you, if you're willing to handle that? And then at our next meeting, so I'll amend the proposed calendar for the appointment according to that. But we'll plan on seeing your draft at the September, I don't know, you know, first September meeting.
What would that do to, to the schedule, then? It seems like it would push it back a month?
It would push it back, yes, it would push it back almost a month.
Does this, I, I worry, I mean, you brought up a great point last meeting, Meredith, that, you know, if we were to get hit with COVID, that there's actually a benefit to filling this slot sooner than later. I just, I'm just, I mean, we pointed, we pointed two board members very successfully with the process as it is in front of us. I'm just curious if it's really the best use of our energy now in the middle of a pandemic.
I would, I mean, being one of the people that was appointed, I will say that that process did leave a lot to be desired. Like, I-
But it worked.
And I don't, I don't know that it, it did, like, honestly, I feel like, I mean, I'm not going to say because I, I was one of the people that was appointed, that it worked. Like, I, I think that it says more that since I was one of the people appointed, that it, that I still feel like I could see some vulnerabilities in it is kind of a testament to the fact that it's important to get a process right.
Well, I- I'm sorry, Anthony. Please, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I, I agree with Kristen, actually. I, I think the process wasn't perfect last time. And I think, you know, I, I like Kristen's idea that there may be perhaps questions to revolve around the goals. Because I only mentioned one of them, and maybe perhaps we should mention, you know, we should have questions for all of them. But in any event, I, I don't, I agree that the process wasn't perfect. I remember being the interviewer, one of the interviewers, and, you know, on, already on the board, and it was like, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't easy trying to ask the same question of all the candidates. You know, some of them elaborated on some topics and some of them didn't. And, and, you know, we, I think we did the best we can at the time because we weren't, we were, we knew. Yes. Yeah.
Well, I, I do, you know, I actually really see the value in that, too. I mean, that's why I sent this out. I don't know what I did early, I can't even remember. I don't even know what day it is. So, but, you know, so that we could give some thought to the questions. It's summer. Everyone's, you know, barely getting by. No one had time to really think about it. But in, in this discussion, I think that there would be a lot of value because when we did appoint, you know, the, the people we appointed, part of their value, I can say in my mind, was that they had been attending meetings regularly. And so I knew that there wouldn't be that learning curve. I don't, I don't think we have anyone attending meetings regularly anymore. And so I think any appoint would be, would have-
I wonder, is there a way, because actually I hear that, and that's great. My only concern is just delaying more than we need to. Could we just take a minute right now and just agree on have, like, having questions that respond, maybe just ask all candidates to write a response to each of the board goals? Maybe just ask all candidates to write a response to each of the board goals, you know?
You know, I, I think it's worth thinking this out. Well, actually, one of the things that I thought a lot about um is that I would like to leave behind, when I'm not a board member here anymore, some procedures that people can use, uh, like onboarding new board members. This is another thing that I think, I think we should do it well. I, it's almost 10 o'clock, we still have the consent agenda. I've been up since 4:00 in the morning. I don't have any bandwidth to write anything right now.
I also think that I really do want to, if, if there's people that, that others have reached out to or that they're thinking about running and they're serious about it, then, you know, we are in the mid, I agree with you about the, the COVID thing, it's definitely a concern. The flip side of that is, you know, there have been multiple Zooms, like, our number one thing that we're dealing with is opening during a pandemic and it's, it's going to be a hard thing to sort of step into that mid-stride and hit the ground running. And, and um it's going to be really important to be caught up to speed and.
100%. No, I'm really, I'm thinking of the perspective of people who might be interested in this position, um, who haven't put their applications forward or following this closely. I think they're kind of waiting for us to, to give some guidance and to like, you know, submit their information to us, you know? So I just want to know as soon as possible, I think, like, who's, who's in the field and kind of what are they thinking about?
These are public that, that anyone can attend and the, the committee meetings are also public. So it's, it's easy to jump in as, you know, as a member of the public right now to. I, I think the COVID threat is real, but I also think doing something in a rush is not a great, you know, not a great thing to do. And it doesn't, it, this is not a, like, this is not an endless um postponement. This is just figuring out the process.
But it's also, this is a, this is a grind, so you have to be ready to know that you want to join this. And a big part of that is, uh, you know, the invitation definitely exists. I think that, um, but, you know, this is not going to be something that we, um, because we could, you know, we can function.
Right.
Mall or Bo, you know, with a, with reduced by one person. So it's like, if, if there's, if there's really an interest and a desire to do it, that needs to.
I just, I want to be totally honest, I would hate to give the public impression, uh, there's been so much of a call for us to bring people onto the board that express diversity, particularly racial diversity and age diversity. I would hate to give the impression that we're setting, we're raising the bar. Where there was a certain bar for appointments when Kristen and Craig joined the board, but now we're going to, to raise that bar. I just want to make sure that we're not giving that public impression because I think that, that, you know, there's a lot of attention around this.
Well, is that the impression that you're getting?
A little bit.
Well, I can say that's not my intention and I can, everybody else can speak to this if they feel strongly about that because I don't feel comfortable with it being characterized that way at all.
I have a suggestion. Um, I, I think the only reason why it's getting delayed a month is because we, we, we kind of uh gave it to Craig's committee, which I believe is comfortable. But it doesn't have to go to Craig's committee. It could go to another committee or form its own committee to, to do this before a 20th, uh, 20th, you know, the 24th. So, um, if that is, that is, that, if that is the neutral ground, I guess the middle ground here, then maybe we should do that. I mean, I know policy, just James scheduled on the 17th. I mean, you know, I know, I think there's a full agenda there, so I don't, I don't know if I want to put it there. But if we want to get four volunteers to put together something.
What the rules are about forming an ad hoc committee, are we allowed to just do that? Do you know the answer to that? And does it, does it need, like, would that?
I, I believe, I believe you, I believe is, if the board makes a motion to form an ad hoc committee to do a questionnaire, I believe that's, and it gets passed as a motion, then I think it's, it's fine. I think that's how we formed the diversity committee when we first formed it.
Okay, um. My, my plate is very full next week. I have, I have the meetings that we have for the board and I have, um, I have work that I'm.
We not, this couldn't just, a workshop, this couldn't just be a workshop in the next, like, people email these suggestions that we, we, someone collects this.
Public element of it, like, the PR committee, it's a public meeting. So to me, I think the transparency is also important.
Well, no, that, we, we just collect all the ideas and then workshop them in the next board meeting.
This would.
The idea of doing stuff in email, I do not think it's transparent. I think it's a bad practice of a board and then people get comfortable doing business that way. And it loses the, uh, the genuine discussion as to what a board does when you're doing it that way. I know I don't have a personal time to check emails every ti, every which way and make sure I respond back to it in that, in that manner. I'd rather have a discussion.
I guess I'm just curious, how did we imagine tonight to go? Because tonight we had Meredith emailed us previous uh questions. And then tonight we were going to discuss and come up with the plan for this process and then agree on it. So I'm just curious why we're doing some, like, weren't we always going to workshop this language in?
No, I think Meredith sent that, my, my interpretation was Meredith's email asked if there was any additions.
For myself, thank you very much. I, I set it in beforehand so that people would come prepared to the meeting with their suggestions.
I, I, I mean, I think, I think, I think, you know, there's been a lot of delays preparing for this meeting. So I think that's also something that's been on the conversation. But, I mean, workshop, we're not workshop, but that's the semantics, we're, we're talking about it now anyway. Whether we, we were going to agree tonight is, is, I guess it's, it's your better question here. Again, I propose that, you know, we used to do double header committees anyway. So, I mean, after the policy committee, if you, if, if this ad hoc committee wants to meet on the 17th, um, you know, I'll volunteer for it.
I'll volunteer for it as well. I'm also happy to, to work on it, i, you know, in the uh, in P R A L, either way. So if we do it after the policy committee, we can have the, we can have a draft for the um, for the 24th meeting. Well, I would need one.
I would do it also, I just didn't want to, I want to leave space for anyone else wants to do it, that's fine, but I'll be there and happy to do it.
Happy to do it.
If, if I weren't going on vacation next week, I would, I would be there.
I make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee to um propose a questionnaire for board candidacy to the board uh for the board meeting on the 24th. Not to be that specific, but, you know.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second, second that.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I was comfortable with P R doing it because they handle the sort of public version of the process. But, and we publicize those meetings well, and I thought Craig could spearhead it.
Well, you could probably just announce this uh meeting as you would any other, just call it the ad hoc uh appointment committee or something. And make it public so that uh anybody could tune in and it would be on Zoom as well, right?
Yep.
It just seemed, it did seem like a natural fit for the PR committee, but um.
It does, but, but you have uh the timing aspect and that committee meeting is going to be after the 24th board meeting. So you're losing, uh, you know, about a month, really.
I understand. So that's going to be Laura, Anthony, and James.
Well, I would suggest then, since two of the people on that committee were not part of the process last time, that you should interview the people who were a part of it so you could get better insight as to what they found problematic.
I, I completely agree. Okay, are there any other comments or?
I'll interview Craig.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, so it passes seven to one. Okay, um, so we have the consent agenda. Sorry, I had the language up. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anyone that wants to pull anything from the consent agenda?
11:05?
11:05. Anyone else? So can I have a motion for 11:01 through 11:18, less 11:05?
So moved, Anthony.
Second? Was that Alyssa?
Yes.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion for 11.05?
So moved.
Second? Sorry, who did second?
No, I think two of us did.
I got Craig for.
I'll second, Anthony.
Okay, comments or questions?
So, uh, we have uh word from Ron Mackey that he would be leaving the district. I think observation should be made that it's been many years of uh very good service. I've always admired anybody who has the ability to uh put together that incredible uh transportation routing system. And uh he will be missed, but I guess he is going to stick around and give us some advice in the meantime. So, thanks, Ron.
Yeah, I just want to jump in and second that. Thank you, Ron, for all the uh care and leadership you've given the district. Uh, I will personally miss working with you and uh we do, uh, maybe we, you, we still have our numbers and we can have talks at weird times of the day about weather in the future. And I also just want to say on consent agenda tonight, uh, I want to offer congratulations to uh, to Laura Cahill for uh, for being granted tenure tonight. And uh, um, we're really excited uh to do this tonight and excited uh for the community at South Avenue. And uh looking forward to the year ahead, working with you. So congratulations on that.
Congratulations.
And thank you, Ron, for your service. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes eight to zero. Okay, uh, we do not need an executive, second executive session, so we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Meredith, can I, can I ask a quick question before we um close the meeting? Did we follow up on um our intentions for the plan for us having in-person meetings on the board?
Um, we, I have spoken to Matt about that and we will be putting out an email to the board. But um I, I will say that, you know, it mostly follows the same safety measures that the, that the district has decided on for students.
Do we, and will the, will that be made, so the next, the plans for the next meeting to be in person, is that correct?
That's the working plan, yeah.
So do we, will we have a mechanism that we can inform the public or right now would be a great time to inform the public how they'll participate in that, uh, in that meeting if they can't come in person? If there's a way for people to make public comment, have health risks?
We're, we're still working out that part of it, but we aim to have a way for people to participate either way.
Okay, would it make sense, does it, I, I, I sense that there's, there's some people on the board who feel strongly that we should sort of charge into that. As a, I've made clear is I, I don't feel the same way. But I, I think caution is maybe a way to go, should?
If there are board members that are um concerned for their health and safety, we would definitely allow them to call them by remote.
Okay, um, I guess I just wonder, is this, is this going to be a board, this, this is not a board decision? This is a, a decision that you're, that you're making, Meredith?
Um, well, it's a, I don't think this is something that. First, I know, I can talk to legal about it.
I'm sorry, you broke up. He says you don't think that, what?
I don't think that this is something that requires a board vote, no. I mean, it's something that I think if we, we can do safely, we offer it with the, you know, with the very clear message that if board members are concerned for their health or safety, that they do not have to attend in person, they can attend remotely.
So if I, if I were to attend uh remotely, for example, um, would I have to give, so standard protocol would be that I give legal notice that where my location is. Obviously, that, that is not something that I would be able to do, for example. So how would, how would one do that? I guess I'm just curious how this is going to work.
Well, Anthony, um, I mean, is always just email, said, what do you mean, you wouldn't be?
Well, my understanding, the legal requirement is that uh we announce our location because ostensibly legally it's, it's public, right? But in this situation, you know, if someone did not, if someone wanted to be remote, I wouldn't be announcing my space as public.
I, I, I think the concern, if I could just, maybe just um, um, simplify this, is that if, when you, when you have an open meeting law, you, you give the, you give your location because any person should be allowed to go to an alternate location and attend the board meeting there as well. But if you are attending the board meeting because of COVID concerns, then it defeats the purpose of having your door open for everyone else to come into your house, uh, to attend the meeting, well. So how would you resolve that?
I'll get back to you about that. I don't have the answer to that.
I guess the, after our last, our last meeting, this came up and uh I think a few of us had some questions. And I, I was just expecting that we would have those questions answered before committing to a public meeting. And that's just my only, my only apprehension about just sort of now we're, we're scheduling the next meeting.
So I'm not, I said we're, we are working on it, though. I'm not committing to it because then we haven't resolved the, um, and I didn't know about that issue. I mean, I, yeah, I'm not sure about that. So I'll find out about it. But, um, but I will say we are, we are gathering information with the goal of working toward that, that is the idea.
Oh, absolutely. And I, I want to be clear, my, my apprehension is, is mostly about uh making sure that everyone in the public feels like they can come to our meetings. If they have health risks, if they're, um, I don't want somebody who's choosing to participate as a remote student, the 30% of our, of our community, to feel like they don't have access to these meetings. And so that's just something that, that, that I, I want to advocate for, is to make sure that, that people can come, they can make comments and that they don't feel any barriers to, to access to our, to our board meetings.
If I, if I could add on to that point, actually, I, I, I kind of feel like we shouldn't, we shouldn't also one who does not, any student who does not um participate in person feel like they are being um singled out or discriminated or anything bad like that, right? So, and, and I feel like that's also appropriate for, for adults as well. So I think, we, you know, I think we're all, uh, we all have our own reasons why we would either participate in person or not participate in person. And I think it's, I think it's very important that we emphasize that it's, it's, you know, we're not judging you if you can't.
I hope I'm not giving the impression that I'm judging anyone. I, I definitely want for people who don't feel comfortable to attend by remote, um, yeah.
Yeah.
I do feel strongly that as leaders, though, we do need to be prepared that if we're signing onto a plan that requires the staff and, you know, teachers and administrators be um in a building that, to the extent we can, that we try to show solidarity with what they're facing. Because I know personally, I'm not prepared to ask anybody to do something that I won't be prepared to do myself. And unless I have very good reason. I'm not judging people's reasons at all, but I do feel like. I'm not judging people's reasons at all, but I do feel like, I think we've all seen the meme of the, you know, school's opening, but the board will only meet on Zoom. And I think that, um, can be harmful to trusting the board. You know, if we're trying to, if we're saying we agree with this plan, then the people who feel comfortable and feel like they can, should show that leadership. I do also know that city public meetings and other municipalities have been starting because, um, my husband's, um, work requires that he attend those. So he's been going too. Um, they're handling them with caution.
City of Beacon, City Council is not in person, uh, yet.
I know, I wasn't comparing it to City of Beacon, City Council and, um, I'm just comparing it, like, I'm just saying that there's other public meetings that are happening and I'm just saying that from a perspective, a leadership perspective and a representation perspective that I don't feel comfortable, um, doing something that I would, I don't feel comfortable signing onto a plan that I wouldn't feel comfortable doing myself.
I, I mean, I, I just have to say, um, I also feel very strongly about being a leader. Um, I don't take my leadership initiative from Fox News memes. Um, and my idea of leadership really is about having a thoughtful plan and communicating to the public that the reason why I have faith in our hybrid plan is because it's so well thought out. I think that if we were asking, uh, Matt two weeks before schools open, what the plan is, and he was like, actually, I don't know, I have to check with Legal, uh, it would seem like a, it seemed like a question as to why are we charging into it? So I have some questions that I think are reasonable that we don't have answers to. And it seems, uh, it doesn't seem to me to fit with my idea of strong leadership to tell people that, uh, yes, or the public board meetings will be safe. If you are at health risk, you will be able to participate, though I have no idea what that plan looks like right now.
A meeting, a board meeting is, I definitely, I think of it as different from the, um, from, you know, 70% of our students returning to school. But I also feel that the, we're building on the knowledge that we have gained in planning for that, to plan this meeting. And so a lot of it, I think, is just folding in the knowledge we already have because of the planning that the district has had to do around student reentering. So it doesn't seem like quite as behemoth a task to me, but I'm sure that we can get information out. Um, I, I, I'm unclear from you if your concerns are personal or just sort of like procedural?
They're kind of both. And this is kind of like, uh, I'm sure we all have this experience, like we all bring our own personal experiences and we recognize that that represents a certain, uh, population. Um, I don't, I, I feel like we know that 30% of now, roughly 30% of our students are, are families that are not feeling comfortable to come in public. So I am, I'm kind of advocating with that in mind. I think there are a lot of people that probably have the same kind of nervousness that I share. And what I'm looking for, and I want to be clear, is I'm not opposed to in-person meetings. It's not actually my position. Um, but I, I do feel like we need to be very conscious about, um, how the public's going to have access to it and how we can build that trust for communicating a clear plan that's well thought out and not based on a meme, frankly.
I, I, so I, I, that's not what I'm basing it on and I feel like this is getting a little bit kind of, um.
It's definitely not a motion to adjourn the meeting. So I think, I think if there's personal discussions that need to happen, then go at it, guys.
Yeah. I, I do think that, just, I can say that the assumption that people aren't attending because that they are, um, afraid to, of being, of going public is, is not always, it's a, it's a big assumption. I'm, I'm going fully remote and a big part of what's driving me is an equity issue. And so that is separate. But I also feel like I am not, I don't know, I, I cited that meme. I actually don't know that it's Fox News. It's just something that I've seen and as a board member, I wasn't suggesting that we do something for that reason. And now I regret that that's something I cited because it seems to have been, become something we've latched on to. It simply is, we have a lot of anxious staff returning to a building and I want to, from a, from my one vote, and what I can do individually on the board is just show that I'm willing to walk into that building too. And that's it. But I'm happy to motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mer- Meredith?
Yes.
We, we're, we're doing Zoom without, without divulging our addresses because of the executive order and all executive orders have, I mean, not all executive, but, but it has an expiration date, I believe, at some, so, on some point. So at one point, it's going to be out of our hands. We have, uh, maybe, maybe you can tell, you don't tell us now, but maybe you could tell us what that date is.
September 4th.
Oh, it is September 4th. All right, so then.
That's the current expiration date of it.
Yeah, so unless it's extended, we are either going to meet on September 4th or we have to divulge our locations. Okay.
Okay, so that, so that is not, no longer. Thanks, Anthony. Can I have a second to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Thanks, Alyssa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.